Year. First thing is I want to supervise Martin, she's not going to be present, she had a death in the family. So we can do a moment of silence on her behalf and the family, I appreciate it. Thanks everyone. Now, we'll open up with a prayer and I'll have the two billions of dollars. We're about here. To heaven and father, I would like to thank you for this meeting we're about to have. We ask that you allow us to make decisions that are best serve our constituents. We ask that we make these decisions with, to the best of our knowledge, in his name and glory. Amen.
Amen.
We get supervisor Brock to the incident, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first thing we do is order approving the Open Doors Homeless Coalition request for the eighth draw in the amount of four hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents for the emergency rental assistance program to pay from zero six nine six eight six seven hundred and invoice number ten twenty-six, but administrative expenses in the amount of six thousand to be paid from zero six nine six eight six five five six. Fund would be used provided assistance has some kind of resonance to have an impact on COVID nineteen pandemic. In motion.
Motion.
Second.
And discussion. If we just get you to come up and just give us a little briefing on how things are going so far.
Things are going well.
You said your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Mary Simmons from Open Doors Homeless Coalition. We have helped over twelve hundred citizens, twelve hundred households in Harrison County to remain in their homes. We have spent, counting the admin allocation, about eighty-nine percent of the first phase of the funds, which is a significant accomplishment because if we compare to Heinz County and the state programs, they each have only spent about six percent of their funds each, which, which means that we have been able to ensure that people were helped, most of the families were helped that were impacted during the shutdown and beyond before the eviction moratorium ended. Now, we're in a different phase of this, where Phase Two money that you approved last time, we're more into rolling emergencies. There's still maybe a handful of people that have some long rental arrears, but now if one of the retail stores or restaurant or casino has to close for cleaning or to address COVID issues and their hourly employees miss a paycheck or two, we're able to assess that situation and help them to become whole, to cover their arrears in the next month, to help them get back on their feet. So, the program is now operationalized into our, our regular operations. It's not anymore all hands on deck. We all have to just work to, to get this all done because we have a stack of applications. Now we have the rolling applications and we're able to assist people in a, in a more deep way to make sure that, that not only are their arrears covered, but they also have the case management to move forward in a way that, that they will be able to sustain.
And it still has to be tied to COVID in some way.
Yes.
It's just getting more broadly interpreted.
That, it, it is, it is, it does have to be covered by, by COVID, so, so yes. And, and with the surge, there are more people who tested positive, who had to be off work, who don't get sick pay. So we're, we're having to do that kind of analysis to make sure that the people who are being served were impacted one way or another by the pandemic, also that they did run into some financial difficulty and through this financial assistance and our case management, they'll be sustainable moving forward.
Do y'all, do y'all pay the, the leaser, not the leaseholder, the one leasing directly? Or do you give the money to the person to pay it? I guess what I'm saying is, are they assured to receive the funds?
We pay it to the landlord.
You do pay it to the landlord, good.
And that's why we need participation by both the tenant and the landlord and, and the landlord makes certain commitments along the way that they will apply the money to the arrears and that they won't evict the person after receiving that, that funding.
Well, once they receive that funding, I mean, it would be corruption if they didn't do it.
Which is why we ask they make the commitment, yes.
Mr. President. These are working people that are not getting paid, they're not getting the check from the government, the check from us and the check from, from, that, that's not happening, right?
We're very careful that we're not duplicating any funding.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Any further discussions?
Glad to have the working folks.
Appreciate the job you're doing. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Our motion carries. Next we have the consent agenda. Item number two point four has been based on the consent agenda. Same can be routine, not controversial matters, so what y'all supervisors are likely to agree. Motion?
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next we have the item five, order approving mileage reimbursement for Justice Board employees at listed payable from zero zero one, one six six four seven five, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item six, order approving travelers listed. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, order approving contract twenty twenty-two zero six in the amount of three hundred nine four thousand eight five two for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Southern Mississippi Planning and Development District Area Agency on Aging for Adult Daycare, Senior Center Transportation and NSIP, unauthorized board president to execute the same. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, order accepting lowest and best bid received on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one from Block machinery, accompanying amount of fifty-eight thousand, seven ninety-eight each for the purchase of three new twenty twenty-two mid-ground road construction sweepers at a total cost of one seventy-six, three ninety-four for the road department payable from account one five zero, three hundred nine one six, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, order approving joint funding agreement between the US Department of Interior, US Geological Survey in Harrison County for the period of October one, twenty twenty-one through September thirty, twenty twenty-two for operation and maintenance of three string gauges in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred with contribution of three thousand from the US Geological Survey Corporate Matching Program for a combined total of twenty-five thousand, five hundred, unauthorized execution of said agreement. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. I need some discussion.
Hi, I'm Stellie.
Matt?
Hi, good morning. Pat Stratton with Harrison County Emergency Management. This is our annual agreement that we have with the US Geological Survey to maintain our gauges along the Chute Cabuff, Biloxi and Wolf Rivers. And so these gauges allow for us to accurately measure the river heights and then the service with their forecasting and the warnings that go out to all of our community members. This is the annual agreement. There is a price increase compared to last year, very minor one, it's gone up, I think a thousand dollars. And so this is the first price increase in about three years and so it's, it's just expected.
So we do maintenance?
They do maintain these gauges. We've had a couple of breakages over the last year. They come right out and fix them up and there's no, no additional cost to us.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, recognize sheriff on his, as he reported the number of persons accounted in Harrison County jail facility.
Morning. Total, we have six seventy, twenty-nine misdemeanors, one hundred thirteen females, eighteen that are clear state arrest and twenty-six federal penalties.
How'd it go Louisiana?
Went good. Good about, probably about thirty-five hundred meals. It was good.
It was down in home.
Very appreciative and it was a great department that we went to, so they, it was, it was good all around.
Sheriff.
It was twenty-nine misdemeanors. Twenty-nine, low. Well, that's this week. Tomorrow would be one hundred and eighteen. Just hit it right, I guess, I don't know.
You were clean, clean house for the weekend.
Thanks Sheriff. Item eleven, order straight up on the minutes of following executed documents. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, approving the minimum random of understanding between Harrison County School District and Harrison County Sheriff. Oh yeah. I'm sorry, I have noted that we want to table or remove that from the agenda.
Just remove it.
Just remove it from the agenda. Can we get a motion to move item twelve off the agenda?
Motion?
In a second.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed?
Well, to table.
Well, it's just going to be on the next.
We'll put it on the next one.
Item thirteen, order adjudicating signature by the board president of the amended grant agreement for the Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy projected from the Gulf Coast Restoration Fund and spreading the same upon the minutes. Only changing in new subdivisions due for all the disbursements to be received by June thirty of twenty twenty-two. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, order authorizing sheriff's offices sell one guard, model twenty-two, serial number YUY three seven eight, asset number, asset number twenty-three five eight one to retire, to retiring deputy Jason Johnson for fee of one dollar is allowed by Mississippi Code Section forty-five nine one thirty-one. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen, order approving the mileage reimbursement in county travel for the following employees. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, order approving the annual inventory report for the fiscal year ending September thirty of twenty twenty-one estimate to the state auditor's office and on the file with the county administrative office. Administrative office. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Order authorizing the board president to execute the law stolen after they were removed the following assets and authorize an inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory. Motion?
Motion.
We get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen, order declaring various ivy's junk as per the attached list from the Harrison County Indian Department authorizing said department to disposal of, of these assets. Motion?
Motion.
Get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Nineteen, order authorizing disposal of assets per attached list and authorize the inventory clerk to remove same from the inventory. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Item twenty, order correcting the inventory adding back items that were previously disposed that are still in use per attached list and authorize the inventory clerk to add back to the inventory. Motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-one, order acknowledging receipt of August procurement card and travel card as follows. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-one, order approving year-end budget adjustments, adjusting journal entries and interfund transfers if needed to close out fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
Year-end budget adjustments?
Year-end budget adjustments.
Ma'am?
These are year-end adjustments to adjust actual expenditures, or excuse me, to adjust the budgeted amounts to what was actually spent. It's just a routine in accordance with governmental accounting standards that's done every year. So in the second meeting of October, once those budget amendments are done, that amended budget for fiscal year twenty-one will be spread on the minutes. So you'll see that on the agenda coming up.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Good job.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-three, order approving the end of year interfund loan repayments per the tax schedule. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-four, order authorizing interfund loans for beginning of year fiscal year twenty twenty-two per the tax schedule. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Order authorizing transferring amount of one hundred thousand from the interfund zero zero one, nine hundred now five zero for hurricane ida fund, one seven three, zero 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 three seven for hurricane related expenditures. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, that's in anticipation of reimbursement.
Well, at this point, we're not exactly sure. Matt can probably better answer that question with discussions from FEMA.
I like that.
Yes, sir. So we are actively, this week, finishing up our joint preliminary damage assessments with MEMA and FEMA on the hurricane ida damages. They have not yet ruled if we will be receiving public assistance, but I do anticipate that being very likely. So in, in that case, there would be reimbursement. Yes, sir.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I do want to just mention that Matt did an amazing job and I, I just wanted to say that. You did a really great job with leadership and communication, so thank you.
Yes, he did. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-six, order authorizing payment of claim that's listed. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-seven, order authorizing insurance or duplicate warrants that's listed. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-eight, order approval of payment to Pine Bell Mental Health Care Resources, invoice number twenty twenty-one zero nine in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-five for the monthly county contribution September twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, one hundred twenty-five nine, five nine five for mental health payable from zero zero one, four hundred seven six zero and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty from CSU payable for zero zero one, four five seven, seven five one. Motion?
Motion.
We get the motion?
Second discussion.
Second discussion.
They told us they were not, they were not receiving these funds like we're indicating here on our agenda. CSU and all that. They, they looking at that as one contribution from Harrison County. So they're not contributing, for example, that particular fund to CSU.
Right. This, the way, this is our last one. Next year's, in next year's budget, we're just doing a flat.
We, oh, okay. For next year, we're not going to be saying this because it's confusing.
Right. That's the way we had this, in this past previous year's budget. That's the way we had set it up, but for next year's budget, we just do one line.
It will not reflect those, that differences.
Coming out of one line.
Thank you.
Good. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next we'll have.
We'll do Matt.
Can we go back to item seventeen for a second?
Go back to item seventeen.
That's the various affidavits, A through J. I apologize, I should have said it when it came up. Some of these affidavits do not provide any information as to what happened. It just says could not locate during annual county inventory. I don't think that's sufficient to sign an affidavit or ask the board president to sign an affidavit that does not give an explanation about what happened to the item. It was just lost. I'm not saying that it happened to it or toward. I'm just saying just because you can't locate it, doesn't mean it's been lost unless you're going to state that. So the board president signed an affidavit that says, some of them have a complete explanation, they're fine. Like the first one said, gives an explanation, has a police report attached to it about what happened to the item. Then multiple ones just simply say could not locate during annual county inventory.
So would you like us to rescind this?
I would like, I think the board ought to take.
The ones for the fair.
The ones that have an explanation, the board should authorize. The ones that just say could not locate item during annual county inventory.
The ones for the fair.
Okay, so.
If I were an auditor, I would say that's an affidavit of, that you just said it can't be found. You know what I'm saying? There's law that is gone.
That's the ones.
Which one?
It feels to J.
It's C, C, D, E, F, G.
C, D, E, F and D, those are the ones that, that you noticed that has an explanation.
Just let the motion reflect those that are, that indicate unable to locate, we're not approving.
Should we rescind what we already approved?
Yes, you're going to have to rescind what you do.
I make a motion to rescind number seventeen.
B through B.
And then we're declaring.
I would say motion to reconsider.
We proved it, but.
What do you think? Now, what do you think we need to do?
Either rescind it or reconsider it. And then we're going to take out those that, that have the phrase
Unable to locate.
Could not locate during annual county inventory. I'd be okay with the things that we could not locate during the inventory when we believe the thing has been lost or stolen, but that just doesn't say anything.
We're assuming something that is not stated.
At least employee's signatures need to be.
Unless it's lost or stolen, we should be able to locate.
So we have a motion to rescind.
We're going to have a motion to rescind, I, order seventeen, we get a, we got a second on that?
Second.
Okay, I'll take that motion, say aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, we, we need a, we need a motion to.
I would say approve the ones that have an explanation, but not the ones that simply say could not locate item during county inventory.
So we need to get a motion for item C, D, E and F that has information as far as whereabouts.
No. No. I'll make a motion to approve E, G through J.
H through J.
H through J, thank you.
H is road for, we got a, has an explanation.
Yeah, that's what we're approving, the stoners, those three. And somebody stole the sheriff's radio. Y'all have to do a police report, that's kind of funny.
Really not funny.
I mean, you, you.
I'm not laughing.
No, but.
Funny, you're on radio.
It's unusual, awkward.
No, we get, we get our cards, brother, and do just like y'all do.
Let me get this right now. Which, which one is, has explanation?
Have a motion to approve H.
Through J.
Ah, J.
Okay. We have a motion to approve those items. Okay, can we get a?
Second.
I actually think it'd be better to say, we approve all the ones that have an explanation, not the ones that simply say could not be located during annual county inventory. Because I, I can't keep up with the numbers here when you're saying those. I see the list, but I don't see a label of Z, so I can't tell which one that's up there in that order. So I would just say approve all the ones that have an explanation, but not the ones that don't have an explanation that simply say could not locate during county inventory.
Can we get a motion to that?
And then we get a better explanation.
Okay, motion.
We get a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Does that clean that up?
I think that takes care of it. And then, so Pam, I know that they can go back and get a better explanation, that'd be fine. But also the employee's signature needs to be legible, either printed next to a signature or and what you're concerned about is later on, somebody audited and you're trying to figure out not get criticized for it.
Right. Okay. I'm in good shape with number seventeen, so. Next we, we recognize Mr. Matt McDonald, Executive Director of Mississippi Coast Coliseum. And while he's on his way up, I'd like Matt to note, appreciate everything you're doing. You had kind of weathered some storms and you got another spike, but still, still going forward, so.
We, we had a nice show Saturday.
I, I attended that show and I thoroughly.
I was going to say, you look, you look like you had fun.
I had fun. I did.
That's rare reflection, wearing a prepared bone jacket and an Alabama tie. And I'm balancing that out with my Ole Miss tie.
You know, I was going to, I was going to comment on your powder blue jacket.
I wore it for you.
I know you did, and I'll be, I'll be in Tuscaloosa, Zach.
Me too.
See what happens.
That's why you do it.
First of all, thank y'all for allowing me to get on the agenda. I know this is a short meeting for y'all and y'all need to get on to the business of the county, but and all the times I've been able to appear in front of y'all over the last eighteen months with all the uncertainty of COVID. You know, I know people wonder what's happened to our dream and our ambitions and goals of getting a hotel. Well, those never went away. We just had to press the pause button to figure out what the economic climate was going to be coming out of COVID. The developers had to make sure that they had their ability to get financing, dealing with all the issues of COVID. So today, what we're here to do is kind of educate y'all on a fairly new concept to me. I'm not sure it's a new concept out in the business world, but it is to me. And I, and I don't know if y'all are aware of this type of financing, but I wanted to introduce or reintroduce y'all to Albien Benou. Al and I go back about five years. He came to me with a vision of putting a hotel on our grounds. Not on the beach, in front of our convention center. He understands what our mission is, he understands how we operate. He understands y'all's desire to have a convention center hotel, not a beachfront hotel. And all of those things were agreed upon. We had a contract, we even had money in escrow. But his partner had a death amongst the board of directors that, with the company he had partnered with. And their plans changed and Al kind of went back on the sidelines for a while, but he never lost interest and he always had that vision to get a hotel built on our grounds. He has now come back with another plan with different investors and now's the time for us to present that to y'all. We have submitted it to Tim and I think Trish has vetted this based on what our attorney Bob Burd has told us, that she is very intrigued by this plan. I'm going to, Al, come on up.
I'm here.
I'm going to let you introduce your group. Has Steve made it in yet?
Steve got turned around, so he's going to be here very shortly. Okay, go ahead. I apologize. We apparently got the wrong address and you put in the GPS, it's going a little bit late. He'll be here shortly. I apologize for the delay. Albien Benou, we met a couple of years ago. As Matt said, my financial partner that I brought in, chairman of the board died, so the family stopped doing all new deals, then COVID hit. So we had no way to move forward. Then there was, during COVID or towards the end of the pandemic, I, I reached out to another friend of mine who I've done some work with on the LSU Health Foundation. His group, Provident Resources out of Baton Rouge, actually funded the, the development of LSU Medical Centers new dorm, the first new dorm that we've had since the nineteen sixties and that's being built right now. I talked to him about that project at the ground, about this project that that groundbreaking and he said, yeah, let's look at it. He's done a couple of these convention center hotels around the country, he's actually in the middle of one right now that he can tell you about. It's a bond structure, I, I think it's. that he can tell you about. It's a bond structure. I think it's a great structure. I think actually for the convention center, it will be better than an investor, because at the end of the day, the convention center will wind up owning the hotel. So, it'll be... there's no ground lease. It's just they're hiring Steve and his group to come in. We're going to develop it. Roy Anderson is still going to be the contractor on the deal. So, Buckler Snow is going to be the bond attorney, so a lot of Mississippi roots on this project.
Mr. Banu, just for our record, would you state your address, please?
Fourteen Ogden Boulevard, New Orleans, Louisiana.
Okay, I know exactly where that is. And how... how many years will... before it reverts back to the county of the Coliseum, three, four?
It would be at the end of the financing.
Okay, and how long is the financing?
I believe it's thirty or thirty-five years.
Oh, thirty, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's... it's a long-term bond deal.
Okay.
Well, Steve should be here shortly. He's coming.
Yeah, I just thought so.
Yeah, I talked to him a minute ago as well. So...
Would you like to... for us to just continue, and then when he gets here, we'll stop and do it? Oh, this is it?
This is it. This is it. All right. Say the best of the last. Any more questions?
Okay, will you sing, man?
Give me a guitar. We'll get to work. Brad plays the drums. We can do it.
Okay, there we go.
I may... Matt, if I may... Matt?
Yes, sir.
Ownership of the hotel, is that the normal business that most convention centers have?
Well, in a lot of cases, a municipality or some type of governmental entity will participate in the development of hotels in and around convention centers. That's...
I don't have a problem with development. I guess the ultimate question that I'm asking as a governmental entity, you're going to... once you take ownership of that, then you're responsible... you're responsible for the management of it, and what kind of cost is involved in all that? Rather than having it, you know, built and have some sort of arrangement with the hotel owner.
Now, when... when the property is built, it will fall under management, not from the Coliseum standpoint. And Al, you can go into how y'all will select the company to come in to run it. And it... the property would not come back to us until a thirty- to thirty-five-year period when the bonds are paid off. So, it's not us running a hotel from day one. It wouldn't happen until thirty to thirty-four years before we would even have to look at that. But we wouldn't want to be in the hotel business. We would... we would ultimately hire a company to do that and in turn, get a percentage of the profit for what they were doing. We don't want to be in the operation of a hotel. That's not what we do.
But this financing package, just so for... because I understand we still have already in place that company that's going to run the hotel.
Correct.
And the revenues from the hotel will hopefully pay the bonds.
Correct.
What happens if we don't pay the bonds?
That's... that's the question I want to make sure y'all get answered.
Right.
Steve will be in. We'll answer that for you in just a moment. It's like his presentation. Steve, you want to set up?
I will... will...
It's a revenue bond, but the revenues aren't strong enough to pay the bond, unless it's going to fall on the county and the Coliseum.
Well, that's not what my understanding is, and that's not what my interest is, because I told y'all from day one that I'm not looking for a deal that gets y'all on the hook or us on the hook.
I don't want to... I don't want to get involved in an investment that we're... we're having to pay. We're not...
Neither do I. Neither do I.
That's what I want, clarify.
I understand that.
That's exactly why we're here today, to make sure y'all vet this and y'all ask those tough questions, because if we... if we can make this work, we all have to be on the same page. We all have to have the same understandings and writing where there is no obligation from Harrison County, the taxpayers of Harrison County, or the Mississippi Coast Coliseum Commission. Period. End of story.
Because we do have a bond already existing for the Coliseum.
Pardon me now?
We already have a bond.
Oh, yes, ma'am. We... I'm very well aware of that. But fortunately, the revenues are... I saw Steve Pittman at y'all's last meeting. I spoke to him briefly, and he's going to come out and meet with me. But he's telling me the revenues have been doing pretty good over the last twelve months, so...
And again, one of the concerns, Matt, and we've had this discussion, you know, basically subsidizing a hotel.
Not interested in that.
And if the public in any way is financing or subsidizing that, then we're in competition with our other...
Our private developers.
Hotels, our private developers, who don't have those subsidies. So, I want to remind the board, we need to be careful about that.
Now, there... I want to be clear, though, because if we come and ask for any type of tax abatements from the city of Biloxi, those things are being worked out through private developers now. So, these developers should have the same ability that a private developer has. But I do understand exactly what you are referring to, and you made that clear. The board has made that clear, and I have understood that from day one, that Harrison County taxpayers will not subsidize the operation, the development, the funding of a hotel. That is very clear.
That's what we've...
And then Al has... Al has been clear on that point since the day we started. And you can...
Yep.
Okay. Speak now or overholt your speech.
Yes, that's... we did it with our other group that was backing us. That was the intent. Bringing Steve in, that's exactly the intent. So, he can speak in a little more detail about that. This is Steve Hicks, Provident out of Baton Rouge.
I have one more question before we start.
Yes, sir.
Thing that... I've never seen the proposal or anything, but we're talking about issuing bonds? Because you're talking about issuing bonds, Tim, and if the revenue doesn't come in, then we're going to be... as a general obligation bond, we're obligated to pay, then we are.
No, if they're revenue bonds, then they can't... they can be sold under the conditions they're talking about, where the... if they default on the bonds, there's no risk of the county in the Coliseum.
Well, that's what I'm...
Right, that's the question.
Okay.
And that's accurate.
I misunderstood, because it sounded like we were issuing the bonds.
No.
I mean, the company is...
There will be... there will probably be some... because there has to be some agreement with the county that allows that to happen, but generally, you can't... TIP bonds are like that.
Yeah.
Generally not liable for the TIPs, only revenues for property.
Right, okay.
And that's what we're serving up.
And they still would be able to apply for abatements in any...
Any... anybody would be eligible to do. I don't have a problem with that.
But that was made abundantly clear first go around, and, you know, when I brought Steve in, we made that clear. He's made that clear to the Convention Coliseum Board as well. So, Steve, you're up.
Commissioners, may I approach?
Yes, sir.
If you would just say your name and your address, please, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Steve Hicks, 7841 Richards Avenue, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I am...
I am so sorry. Before you get started, do you have that joke running? We're going to get you an updated version. I apologize.
Okay.
And, Al, Steve, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Keep going.
I'm chairman, CEO of Provident Resources Group based in Baton Rouge. I'll be telling you more about Provident. If I may, while we're being assisted, I updated the presentation very minorly from the one that we presented to the Mississippi Coast Coliseum and Convention Center Hotel Group a couple of months ago. I updated it because I wanted to add two additional hospitality projects that we're going to market with within the next thirty days. One of the official statements may be posted tomorrow, and that project is for the U.S. Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs. And so, very proud of that project and our affiliation, so I wanted to make sure it was included on the information. If I may, share.
How are you doing?
Pleased to see you.
No taxes.
That's right.
You got an Alabama fan in L.A.?
We got... we got Alabama, we got Ole Miss, we got...
This is going to be fun.
I'm just showing off today.
I might... come Monday, I might be satisfied.
You did that.
Hopefully not.
You'll know soon.
I wouldn't say this is the last time I went to Tuscaloosa. It was 2015. We came home smiling.
The last time we went, we came home smiling after. Not so sure about this year.
We're going to have fun while we can.
Yes, sir. We're going to enjoy every moment.
While we're just kind of talking, I think we have some commissions on the Coliseum Board. Y'all, I just wanted to grab a half of y'all.
Let me... I apologize. I was remiss in my direction. I have Lenny Sawyer, Ms. Linda Hornsby, Lori Daniels, Don Moore, and our attorney, Mr. Bob Burd.
Thank you so much.
And my assistant, Michelle Miniman, and our chief financial officer, Ms. Shelley... Shelley, I might have her.
You know that financial officer's name.
Shelley Ferguson. Shelley and I go way back for when I was at Alderman in the city of Edger Springs, and she was our city clerk. So, I've got a long history with Shelley.
So, it sounds like you brought the big dog with you today, man.
But I'm going to also say, the only thing we're missing, and I know that we have Tamari, correct?
Tamari.
Tamari.
Is when I first met him at the commission meeting, he had his lovely daughter with him at lunch, and so... I guess she was back there. Anyway, first, I apologize for my tardiness. I had the address for the Harrison County Development Commission close to the interstate, and that's where I started out, so please accept my apologies for being tardy. What? Oh, okay, great. I think while we're waiting for me to be given that little clicker, one of the things I'll address head-on, Mr. Ladner and Mr. Holloman, these bonds are project finance revenue bonds. They are supported strictly by the assets that secure those bonds, which would include the improvements that would be constructed, the hotel, and the revenues generated from the operation of the hotel. The bondholders in the municipal market are accustomed to taking this risk. That's one of the reasons that those bonds carry a slightly higher coupon. I know it's difficult to think about taking the word of somebody from LSU, so... I had a good sense to invite to join us Michael Russ with our friends at Butler Snow, and I know they're friends as well.
Good seeing you.
Nice to see you. So, I asked Michael to join us as well, and he can...
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Ladner, you obviously had some great questions and obvious concerns for the county and for y'all's constituents, but as was said earlier, the county would not be issuing the bond. There's a statewide conduit issuer called the Mississippi Business Finance Corporation, which you might be aware of. Their sister corporation is the Mississippi Development Bank, which y'all probably issued bonds through before. It would be a similar structure, and as Steve stated earlier, the bonds would be secured by the property and the revenues that were... that are being built. And obviously, the revenues that come from the hotel. So, you know, we're obviously in the beginning stages of this. We have not gone... We had not, you know, induced the project at MBFC at this point. Obviously, we want to get everybody on board before we move forward, but if you've got any questions about that process or anything for MBFC's concern, I'd be happy to answer those questions. They might be after the... after the presentation.
Sure, but don't go too far.
I'll stay... I'll stay close.
Please.
I'm trying to figure out that's a two-lane tie.
He lives in Alderman.
I'm going to get a picture with you. It's a great... it's a great sport, kid.
It's okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The... first of all, let me tell you a little bit about Provident Resources Group and, I guess, myself. In my prior life for twenty-five years, I attempted to do what Mike did. I'm a recovering bond lawyer. I practiced public financial law for twenty-five years with my own firm, and then I merged that firm into a national firm, Cutac Rock, that does... we did bond issues all over the country. And so, as Yogi Berra said, I came to the... when I was approaching fifty, I came to the fork in the road, and I took it. And so, I left the factory practice alone, and I formed Provident Resources Group as a national nonprofit 501(c)(3) asset development and asset management company. In the past twenty-one years of our operations, Provident, as you can see from this first slide, we operate... we're quite unique as a 501(c)(3). And I know all of you are familiar with nonprofit entities. You have nonprofit hospitals. You have nonprofit universities. Well, Provident as an entity, we have the ability under our charter to finance, operate, own assets that fall in five divisions: city-state resources, education resources, healthcare, housing, and senior living. Four of the five are self-explanatory, but city-state resources, what we're authorized to do there is we have the ability to finance projects that lessen the burdens of government and foster economic development. So, that's what we attempt to do. And as some of the bullet points indicate, we have, in the past twenty-plus years, we have accessed five billion in capital. We finance projects in twenty-one states and the District of Columbia, soon to be twenty-two states. We have... we're approaching five billion in assets under management that we operate around the country, all serving one of those five missions. There are other 501(c)(3)'s, very few of them, but there are a couple around the country that play the role, part of the role of what Provident does. But what distinguishes Provident as a national organization is that at our corporate office in Baton Rouge, we have approximately thirty professionals and support staff. I've listed here the leadership. We have a diversified national board of directors. Four of the outside directors have one hundred and fifteen years' experience on Wall Street with firms such as Lehman Brothers, Dylan Reed, Morgan Stanley, Goldman Sachs, Shearson American Express, et cetera, all people that rose to the positions of managing directors of those organizations. The senior leadership, Donovan Hicks, first and foremost, he's the real lawyer in our family. Donovan is an LSU law graduate, has his master's in tax law from SMU. Christopher Hicks, my son, who joined Provident in 2019, after eighteen years on Wall Street with Citigroup, investment banking firm, doing projects in their governmental infrastructure division and in their higher education group. Then we have Marla Scannicchio, our chief accounting officer, David Grand, our associate general counsel, and other full-time professionals and support staff. We rely heavily on our outside advisors. I listed them, Deborah Lockwood, who is our former president and CFO. She sort of took a step toward retirement last year and ascended a position of senior advisor. And then Ken Becker, who is a managing director. He was a twenty-five-year veteran with Citigroup. And then our law firm, which is the Fishman Haygood Firm out of New Orleans and Baton Rouge, they have represented us the full twenty-five years of our operation. And here are some examples of some of the projects that we have done reflecting our diversity of mission. And also, I take a lot of pride in... you're known by the company you keep, and I think that some of the people that we're in partnership with is indicative of the company we keep and the people that have entrusted these projects in Provident. Our very first hospitality convention center hotel is the Weston in Irving, Texas, at the Irving Convention Center in Los Colinas. Three hundred and fifty-key convention center hotel, right next door to their convention center, much like what is proposed for the Mississippi Coast Coliseum and Convention Center Hotel. We have a similar hotel project in Harlingen, Texas, Emory University, one of our healthcare... one of our more prominent healthcare projects. Provident owns and operates with Emory as our clinical partner. The... one of the top four or five largest proton therapy cancer treatment centers in the United States. It's located in midtown... midtown Atlanta. Also, under construction is a two-hundred-thousand-square-foot ambulatory surgical center at the University of Illinois Chicago. Then, some additional university projects, private university, land university... Then, some additional university projects, private university, Lynn University in Palm Beach County, Florida. That project is under construction. We have another project in Palm Beach County at Palm Beach Atlantic University that opened last year in the middle of COVID. Then we have UMass Boston, which is one of two projects that we're working with the University of Massachusetts system-owned, UMass Boston, which is 1,200 beds of student housing, the only student housing on the campus. And then we have a similar 1,200-bed facility at the UMass Dartmouth campus in Dartmouth. Just to point out, the diversity of projects that we have the ability to undertake, you can see here examples of projects that we are working on around the country, but have not closed. This is kind of a graphic to show what we focus on as a nonprofit partner, in this case with the Mississippi Coast Coliseum and Convention Center Authority, as well as with Harrison County and the region. With our method of financing, the product, the project is produced faster, which saves money. We have demonstrated over the past 21 years that we're a long-term committed partner in these projects, even through COVID, because, as you can imagine, when you have, in our case, 21,000 beds of student housing between Massachusetts, California, Florida, and a few states in between, when the mayor of the District of Columbia issues an executive order and tells 20 colleges and universities in the district, y'all go home. We don't want any students on campus. We don't want you going to classes. Go home. Well, that kind of messes up your revenue stream on a student housing project. And so, what we have demonstrated is the ability, because of our relationships with institutional investors, major municipal bond investors, Nuveen, BlackRock, Capri, I could name more, but all of whom work very closely with Provident, and of course, the rating agencies, Standard and Poor's and Moody's. This is kind of a connect the dots, showing the relationships that will exist. We would enter, we would form a Mississippi limited liability company unless our council advises us that we should form a nonprofit corporation under the laws of Mississippi. We've done both, but we will form what we refer to as an SPE. That SPE will be the entity that enters into the development agreement with Accretive Development, Al and Pratt, who y'all have been working with. Then, we would look to Accretive Development to be the party entering into the construction contract with Ander Corp and Architects, and then also the SPE would enter into the management agreement with Hotel Equities out of Atlanta to manage and operate the hospital, the hotel. Likewise, we would enter into a loan and trust agreement with the conduit issuer that Michael was alluding to, the special, on behalf of issuer in the state of Mississippi. And then, we would work with our investment banking firm, which we have not formally selected, but we are in discussions with Stifel, with whom we have worked around the country, and we look for not only firms that we have an established relationship with, firms that know us, but more importantly, that do business in the state where the project is located. So, that's the board chart. As we have demonstrated in, over the past 20 years with our other projects, our, that legal structure that I showed you, Provident Resources Group, the nonprofit parent, sole member of the LLC or supporting or nonprofit corporation, it will be governed by a board of managers or board of directors. Provident would have three representatives on that board. We would look to the Mississippi Coast Authority to have a representative, and then we would look to another representative from the community. The reason that the Mississippi Coast Coliseum and Convention Center Authority would only have one representative is because the 20% rule of consolidation of debt. If they have more than 20% of the governing power, then the debt would be consolidated on their balance sheet, which is not something they would want. And it's one of the advantages of our structure in that this is off-balance-sheet financing to the authority. However, we want to have as much active local involvement as possible, and so what we do is, either the operating agreement or the bylaws of the corporation provide, or the formation of what we call our project operating committee. There, the majority of the members, preferably a five-member committee, but the majority of the members of that committee will be representatives from Mississippi Coast Coliseum and Convention Authority. And Provident, of course, would have a representative, and we would look to have a representative from the manager as well. So that's the organizational structure, and that's how we maintain local involvement, because the real work is done by the project operating committee. And I say work in the sense that every year, under the bond financing, we will be required to, we'll be required to deliver an operating budget for the next year. And generally, that operating budget is delivered to the trustee bank, and we would be working with Hancock Whitney as the trustee bank. We've done a number of projects with Hancock Whitney. They, their corporate trust department for municipal bonds is headed up by a gentleman by the name of John Giroda. We know John very well. He runs an outstanding municipal public finance trustee operation, and his offices are in Baton Rouge, at Hancock Whitney's offices there.
If I may, one question.
Yes, sir.
So your project operating committee, that's simply a advisory committee, but holds no real decision-making authority?
Intentionally, yes, sir. It is an advisory committee. It has no governing authority. That is the reason that they have, that the Mississippi Coast Authority would have the majority of the membership.
If it had any authority, then we'd run into the problem.
On balance sheet. Yes, sir, Mr. Ladner. So, we use this structure for the first time in 2004 on a project at the University of Missouri, Kansas City. The rating agencies, Moody's on that particular project, really liked the structure, and so we've been doing it on every project ever since, because they like to stay, the rating agencies, they like to see the community involvement that this structure permits. So, it also has become the norm in similar P3 financings involving an independent nonprofit like Provident. Provident, as the asset developer and asset manager, we've enumerated on two of the slides, the asset development and the asset management. This enumerates examples of the duties and responsibilities that we have as the asset developer. We are compensated at financial closing with what we call an asset development fee that will be negotiated with the financing team, with the Mississippi Coast Authority, their board, along with the investment bankers, and the, in addition to that, once the bonds are delivered, construction commences, and then we move into operations after the CEO is issued. Then, we receive an annual asset management fee that is paid from the operations of the project for as long as we own the asset, as long as the debt is outstanding in our name. And the asset management services, the responsibilities have really increased since '08, '09, and the passage of the Dodd-Frank legislation, which many of you are familiar with, because what it has done is, it has layered on a lot of regulations regarding disclosure to the bondholder, to the investor community, and that is the responsibility of Provident as the asset manager, to make sure that we are in touch with the institutional investors, that we keep them posted on operations of the asset that they have, in essence, loaned the money to finance. And I'm very proud of the relationship, as I said earlier, the relationship that we have with those institutional investors, and we have, I believe, really demonstrated that over the past year and a half, two years, well, since COVID, because of the challenges that some of the projects, particularly the higher education projects, have been presented with, being able to work with those institutional investors, in some cases, entering into a forbearance agreement for a period of time until we get, hopefully, get through COVID and occupancy at the student housing properties gets back to normal. So, those are the services that we provide. The last half or so of the materials that I provided to you, I have shown some of examples, additional case studies with specific information on those bond issues. The Irving Weston Convention Center Hotel is indicated, 350-key Weston, beautiful facility. I should also point out, having a convention center hotel at the Mississippi Coast Authority adjacent to it has been a goal of the board for many years. How long?
Forty-four.
As I said, many years. In the case of Irving Convention Center, they attempted to do their project over a 12-year period of time. They were introduced to Provident in October of 2016, when they were staring down a challenge, and the challenge was, they had entered into agreements with Starwood Hotels. Well, on December 31st, 2016, Starwood was gonna, all of a sudden, poof, turn into Marriott. And the last thing that the city wanted to do was to have to renegotiate all of the contracts that they had entered in, that they were proposing to enter into for that financing with Marriott, after working on it for so long with Starwood. We came in in October of 2016, and the second week of December, we had a document closing, not a financial delivery, but a document closing, where we signed all the documents, and six weeks later, we delivered the bonds, I'm sorry, two months later, we delivered the bonds and financed the project they had been working on for 12 years. I've already mentioned the project in Harlingen. This is a project, we also do conference center hotels for universities. This one is at Radford University and Southwest University, where I was last week for a construction meeting. It's a beautiful facility. But this project, while it's Radford University, it's on the campus of Radford University, it's really a joint venture between the city of Radford, Virginia, and the university, because it will be used not only by the university, but also for numerous events and for economic development and bringing conferences and workshops to Radford, Virginia. Then, last year, in the midst of COVID, with everything going on, we did this project at San Diego State University, obviously in San Diego. In that project, it's 100% occupied, because it is right off the campus, not on campus, and the students want to live at the university. They don't want to be hampered by restrictions that state universities impose on the number of students that are allowed to live on campus during COVID. So it's 100% occupied. On the right is a project that is currently under construction at LSU Health Science Center in New Orleans. This project was undertaken jointly between Provident, LSU Health Foundation, which Al is a member of the board of that foundation. That's how Al found out about Provident and approached us, knowing that we had undertaken this project for LSU. This, it's hard to believe, but states like Louisiana, and dare I say Mississippi, and a few others, that are as poor as we are, this is the first student medical professional housing at LSU in New Orleans for the medical school since the early 1960s. It's just, it's unbelievable. I went to the housing in 1970. The best man in my wedding was in the med school. I went there in 1970. It was horrible then. It just, it just got worse. And so, but this 579-bed property is going to supplement what they refer to as the gray, the gray ghost, I believe, Al?
Yeah.
The gray ghost.
There are a few names.
Two other names that I won't say in the presence of this board, but.
High security in that building? It's not a good neighborhood.
And I would point out, we are, we've done two projects for the University of Illinois System, one in Urbana-Champaign, which is their flagship campus, then University of Illinois Chicago for the med, for the med school. We are, we will be starting by first quarter of next year. Third project, which is a south campus research complex at the University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign, which I'll, where I will be this coming Friday, provided they give me the right address. And so, then, last but not least, we are in competition for a large housing, medical and health professional housing project for the SUNY system in New York, in Brooklyn, which is what they refer to as, the SUNY system has 60-plus campuses. The SUNY Brooklyn campus is referred to as SUNY Downstate, and it is their medical school as well, and our goal is to develop about 800 beds of housing for health professionals and medical students. Here, Urbana-Champaign, the project on the left is our, our project, a combination academic facility and research facility. On the right is the 200,000-square-foot ambulatory surgical center. Here are two projects in Massachusetts with the UMass system, UMass Boston, UMass Dartmouth, that's provided. Go Tigers, LSU, we have.
I think I'll figure out how to get you talking again.
No, yeah, make this a state now. You need to tap it down a minute.
The first time, the first time I visited with the authority, I go in, the night's office, and I felt like I was in a shrine to, to Bear Bryant. And so, we immediately sat down and we started talking LSU and Alabama football. We didn't talk about his project, it was the first time we ever met, and it was one of the most enjoyable 30 minutes pre-meeting that I think I've had in a long time, so just thank you. It was a lot of fun. But, so, I like to show these projects because North Carolina Central University, where we have two projects, NC Central is our nation's largest HBCU, historical black college university in the country. In addition to this project at NC Central, we also, I hope this is on, well, we also have over 2,000 beds of student housing in three different properties on the campus of Howard University in Washington, DC, our nation's oldest HBCU. So my comment earlier about, we take a lot of pride in who we keep company with, we're very proud to have that role with two of our nation's most prominent HBCUs. This is another, this is a case study on our five-room proton treatment center in midtown Atlanta, where we're in partnership with Emory Health and the Windship Cancer So that's the last one on the list of our case studies. Again, I hope that this is. Again, I hope that this has given you some insight into our structure, how we operate. We're not going anywhere, as you can see, while I'm a little bit long in the tooth and I've got a lot of gray hair. We're building an organization that is going to certainly succeed me with some very talented young people with the appropriate experience to do what Providence does. So with that, I'll shut up and be happy to respond to any questions.
Mr. Hix, let me ask you a question, understanding your management. I am curious, and I don't fully understand, if we proceed with this project and you all, what, other than the fact that you have a hotel at the convention center, and the benefits of, just the fact that you have a hotel, are there any negotiations with the Coliseum Commission in reference to any revenue coming in from that hotel?
Yes.
What, what do you stand on that in reference to?
Yes, sir.
Other than the benefits that we all understand, a hotel being there, and it could, people coming and, you know, staying there, what, if any, revenue benefits the, the commission received as participating in this type of a project?
Thank you so much for pointing out that, that I glossed over and totally left that out of my presentation, because it's certainly very important. First of all, as we indicated, we will have a ground lease. It's required, bond counsel, it will be required that that ground lease be market rate ground lease. Now, in all probability, like every other hospitality project we've done, that ground lease will be subordinated to the senior debt issued, the senior bonds. Projects like this are, every one of them that we've done so far, is done with a combination of senior bonds and then subordinated tax-exempt bonds. So it will be subordinated to the debt service on the senior bonds. In addition to that, when you look at pro formas, of course, the projects are challenged in the early years, stabilization and getting revenue streams developed. But once you get out, you know, I'm not going to speculate, but once you get out four or five years into operations and the net free cash flow starts coming in from the operation of the hotel, well, we're the owner and the borrower, those, that net free cash flow goes to the authority, not to us. We are paid an asset management fee, that's it. We have no upside in the project from the standpoint of net free cash flow, revenues generated from the operations. All of that will go to the Mississippi Coast Coliseum.
So anything, what you're saying, any revenue coming in above what your fees are and other costs and stuff like that?
Operations and debt service.
For example, like, for using a term profit, then that profit, that difference would go to the commission?
Yes, sir, 100%.
So the success of that hotel, the more successful it is, more that you, you would commission receive?
It incentivizes us, Marlon, to where, the better we do, the better we do.
You did, right.
But thank you for raising that, Mr. Hix.
Your percentage on, on that, for management percentage, Mr. Hix, is that a set percentage or is that negotiated or how?
Well, first of all, you start with the management fee that would be paid to the management company in, in Atlanta, that.
Would run the hotel.
They're, they're responsible for running the hotel on a day-to-day basis, like a property manager, in essence. And so, hotel equities will receive a fee, I would imagine, in the 4%, 5% of revenues, gross revenues, not net, bond counsel won't let us do net, but gross revenues, that will be their management fee. Providence management, asset management fee is, we start out in the range, on a project this size, which would be one of the, a smaller project, would be in the range of 175, maybe 200,000 per year, escalating at the cost of living index. And so, that's what, what we earn for the services that we provide. And as I said, all of the net, the profit, you know, the margin, just like they say at church on Sunday, no, no margin, no mission, so same thing in our world. So. Okay. Al, again, happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Steve, maybe to try to give us some forward momentum. Where, where do we need to go next if, if the Harris County Board of Supervisors embrace this concept and say, we understand, we have no risk, the commission has no risk, where, what's the next step?
Well, the next step is for us to mutually agree on the investment banking firm that we would work with for either the underwriting of the bonds, excuse my back, the underwriting of the bonds or the institutional placement of those bonds. And as I indicated, currently, we're speaking to Stifel out of their Dallas and St. Louis office, because they're one of a couple of firms that are very active in, as Michael has advised, that's very active in the state of Mississippi. And we want someone that knows Mississippi credits and knows the process. So, as I said, there'll either be an institutional placement or they would be the underwriter of the bonds that would be sold to institutional purchasers pursuant to that underwriting. These are not what we refer to, this is not a retail product, it's not going to be sold to individual investors. So, but we, number one, be, I'm sorry, yes, sir, Mr. Bird.
Matt asked me to address the board. I'm Bob Bird, so for 32 years, it's been my honor and privilege to be general counsel, so I've got 32 of the 44 years of frustration trying to get a convention center hotel. What Matt wanted me to remind the board, step one ultimately, is for this board's approval of the resolution that the commission has prepared, because under the tax code, we have to ask them to come help us. They just can't volunteer to help us. And the resolution that I worked through, Tim would tell you that Tricia Tisdale has vetted it with me, so the resolution's ready for your approval. That's step one. And then we get into the things Steve's talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Bird.
One question and one comment.
Yes, sir.
Question first, what kind of timeframe, assuming that next week we approve this to move forward, what kind of timeframe, basically, are we talking about getting this project basically open to the public?
Well.
Take us to a timeline.
Yes, sir. With the passage of the resolution, which, as Mr. Bird indicated, gives, is what the tax code requires, that, that we have inviting us in to assist with lessening the burdens of government fostering economic development, then we identify our investment banking partner. Then, one of the first steps will be, the developers, Al and Pratt, have had a feasibility study done, but it's stale. It was done pre-COVID. And so, plus, I believe it was HVS?
Yes, that's it.
And so, they've, they've had a study done by one of the two or three best-recognized firms in the country for hospitality market. So that study is going to have to be updated post-COVID, hopefully post-COVID, but regardless, it will have to be updated. And then, at the same time, the plans and specs need to be at a certain point in completion so that the bankers, the lawyers, the developers are comfortable with what the GMP, the guaranteed max price is. Fortunately, we're, we're dealing with a very experienced contractor and, but still, generally, we look for those CDs, construction drawings, to be at least to the point of 75% completion in order to have a GMP that we would market the bonds off of. So those are some of the steps that we'll have to go through. And we'd have to get that feasibility study updated. We would, now, a lot of this is done on a parallel path. We're not going to, you know, sit on our haunches, waiting for the feasibility study and then waiting for the GMP. We would start the process working with bond counsel, working with the issuer of the bonds, and at the appropriate time in that process, start the preparation of the legal documents for the financing. But with us here at October, I would see us, again, I'm just doing the best I can to be responsive to the request for a timeline, but I would see us going into the market sometime in third quarter of 2022. That's my guess, but it's the developer's responsibility to drive that timeline, if that's reasonable.
The only other comment, the comment, I guess, that I would make, we'd have to trust our commissioners, y'all have vetted this, you're comfortable with it?
Lenny Sawyer.
So we would depend on your.
You know, in my time, six years of being on the commission under Matt's leadership, we have our meeting, and every meeting before the COVID, we would give a, the head would give us a convention report, and we turned down conventions because we don't have a convention hotel. And if this is the time we need to move forward, and we're telling them, saying, so thankful that Al has stuck with us and didn't go away, and we appreciate it, Al.
So y'all comfortable with this?
I might, I might add, Marlon, I've heard you loud and clear, and I agree with you, okay, 100% that the taxpayers should not fund it. However, not a lot of developers out there that agree with it, because they're used to getting assistance from, from government.
I know what you're talking about.
And, and therefore, the task that we have is much harder to get accomplished. But, like Lenny said, Al didn't quit on us, Al just kept digging and prodding to figure out that there's got to be another way to do this, and, and thank you for being on that board, I'm not sure you would have figured that out without, if you weren't where you were.
That's true.
This may be our best shot in terms of getting a deal done where the taxpayers don't have risk, and you don't have to answer why you have to raise mileage to pay for a hotel, because that's not what we want.
I think it sounds like an excellent solution to our issue and to our problem without any additional information. If, if, have, have you reviewed the, the resolution?
Tricia has been, and the only thing, there's two questions she said in her discussions with Bob, that there was no ground lease against the, I know, leaning against the property, and a moment ago, somebody said that it was going to be a subordination of the ground lease.
Subordination of the, the ground lease that will be entered into with the SBE and the commission, the authority, that ground lease will be assigned to the bondholders. There's no, there's no mortgage, first mortgage on the real estate, and I'd rather Michael be the one to make those.
That's what I understood, that she, she's listening, so she was saying she thought that that meant some, subordination means a little bit different, but I'm, I'm okay with that, the ground, the ground lease will, the bondholders have a, basically can take the ground lease and stick it to the shoes of whoever.
That's right.
Providence.
You jump major distinction here. I'd like to pass, how many potential developers would have, half dozen, 10?
Half a dozen, at least.
The rent was basically a dollar a year. Under this structure, they have to pay fair market value rent monthly to the commission.
Let me say that. It depends on a third party that will review that, someone, and I'm just using as an example, but someone like CBRE will give us a report on what that fair market value rent is.
Somebody's asked this question, but what size of bond issue are we talking about?
Al?
Roughly.
Two years ago, it was about $30 million, and, you know, I can only expect that it's been thought up 30 or so percent.
Call bar, no commitment, just curious.
What other question are y'all? Do y'all participate in the design of that facility?
You talking about the commission?
Commission, yeah.
I would think so, based on the structure you just showed, you're operating.
We're building this, the collective we, we're building this on your land, so they're going to be as involved as we can make them.
Well, I think that's critical, because y'all know what you need.
Now, we're not, it's not going to be crimson red everywhere. Okay? We're standing.
You're putting the mojo on me, I'm not, I'm not liking it.
Just a lobby in the fours.
I have one, I have a question as well.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the ground lease will be for 35 years, the same as the.
Ground lease will be at least 40 years.
For how many?
At least 40 years.
At least 40 years, so that it gives you a time to create.
Right, and we've done projects where the ground lease has been anywhere from 40 to 50 years, that's a market issue that will be discussed with the anchors.
And then they renegotiate? I'm sure we'll be here talking about it. Then it belongs.
When the ground lease terminates, it will coincide, I mean, the debt will, the debt will be, in essence, 32 years, including the construction period. But when the debt is retired, the ground lease terminates, the asset reverts back to the authority at no cost, it's their asset.
Much like mortgage on your house asset.
Kind of like a win-win situation to me.
If I may, when, when we were looking at doing this initially, or the first couple of times, it was developers would own, I was going to own it with a group out of Dallas. And when Mr. Phillips died and that went away, we talked to a bunch of other financial partners, and, and seeing how we did the LSU Medical School tomorrow, I said, you know what, this is something that I, I believe in that needs to happen, but all the cash flows and the property itself, yours back to the commission, that's a better solution, as I mentioned earlier today. That's a better solution for everyone, except me. Which is okay, I want to say, no, no, there, there are a lot of deals out there, but that's really the reason I brought Steve here, was I thought it was a better solution for the commission and really everyone. So, you know, we're a fee developer on this deal, and, you know, I, I think this has the highest likelihood of success out of all of them. With Andrew Corp, Hotel Equities, and I don't, we didn't get much into that, but Steve, I mean, Hotel Equities is the largest Marriott operator in the world, and they're one of, Hilton's one of his operators. When you bring Marriott to the table, you can't just start operating, you have to go with one of their operators, and theirs is the biggest and the best. So that's why I brought them in.
So I noticed a while ago, you stated it would go to market at 20, third quarter of next year. So, so a best-case scenario, once you go to market, is, is the groundbreaking of the hotel again, and what, what timeframe are we looking on that?
Well, you've got a two-year construction period, Russell.
That's what I would say.
So financing, if we're, if we close, you know, late August, September of 2022, two years from then, is when you'd have ribbon cutting? So we're not asking the board to adopt this resolution today?
No, sir, next minute. Well, I want y'all to take your time, if you have questions. Steve, I'm sure that you've given them contact information in your.
Yes, sir.
If you have questions, I want y'all to ask them, I mean, because by the time this is built, some of y'all may or may not be on the board. I may not be the director by the time.
I probably won't be alive, much.
By, by the time the door is open, I may not, I may not be the director then, I may have retired, but this has got to be done correctly the first time. We can't rush into this, I'm not asking for y'all to make a hasty decision, but the faster that decision is made, the faster we can proceed.
Well, Matt, you've told us, you've kept us abreast of all of this, Tim has, Tricia has for me, so I'm very comfortable, and I'm very excited to welcome y'all here, my humble opinion.
Mine too. I would make the motion today, unless the, our attorney said otherwise.
We don't have the resolution, I'm not sure what to ask you.
Oh. Okay, I thought you had the formal resolution.
We've got a draft, it's not on the agenda.
You're, like, Lenny, you're 100%.
You're like, Lenny, you're 100%, you like this plan?
One of the biggest things that we talked about in the commission, and Matt has talked about, is cost on the accounting. Obviously, with you guys appointing us, his position has been like a major concern. So that timetable as far as when things would roll out, of course, Mr. Steve's really been very, very forthcoming with how that happens. So I feel pretty confident about this. Really, that's one of the reasons why we really want to make sure.
Well, that's what I said, depending on the commission, y'all are more active in it and more detailed than we could ever probably get based on the time y'all been involved in.
And Linda is the director of the Hotel Motel Association, Linda?
Yeah, I can tell you everything I've heard, especially their financing to begin with. I'm intrigued by it, I'm, you know, just thinking, everything, it sounds like a win-win. I am very impressed with their book of business. And I'm very anxious to find out how many rooms they're going to build.
We're encouraging them to go bigger.
Yes.
But let me say this too, and Al and I have agreed upon this from day one. If they're the ones that are going to step to the plate, and in 44 years, we've yet to have somebody step up and hit it out the park. If they're the ones that are going to do it, they should have right of first refusal if the market dictates that we need more rooms. I think it will dictate that, I'm firmly convinced it will dictate that. And so, this is just the start, okay? Now, like I say, whether y'all are here, whether I'm here, doesn't matter. This is about what's good for our community and bringing more people to South Mississippi. Our board, hopefully tomorrow at our regularly scheduled meeting, will adopt this resolution. Then we will forward it on to you. But before we got to that point, I wanted to make sure y'all heard what, the same thing that our commission heard.
I'm comfortable with it, man, I think that's something we need to go with, pursue, I'm comfortable.
Well, I, once again, I know y'all hear me brag about my commission, I put them up against any board on the court. And I'm very sincere about that. Y'all appointed them, okay? So y'all picked some winners, okay?
You're welcome.
And I say thank y'all for that.
I don't know, man, I look out there and I like...
I know y'all have, y'all had a longer meeting than you planned, I thank you for your time. Sometimes it's tough, which y'all, not a lot of times it's tough, which y'all have to listen to. But the day was good, man.
Thank you.
The day was about something that's positive.
The day was good, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Again, Director of the Year, before you all leave, Matt and gentlemen from Louisiana, Brandy McGill from WLAX is outside the door, she would love to speak to y'all and get a copy of what you presented us today, if possible.
I do have one question, Mr. Bird. Your last name really means welcome, doesn't it?
It does. I didn't choose it, but yes.
You're welcome. If your parents would have named you your, that would be terrific.
And Al, I like to Mercy Academy, because I used to run by your house every single day in P.E.
I have that all the time.
Thank you.
I want to thank you.
Hi, Linda, hey, Linda and Tabar, you're still free to talk to Brandy, please. She wants to do a feel-good story about how you feel about it, thank you.
Should any questions come up?
I'll let you find the reference to your board. Yeah, we get with that commission, we get with, I need to get a comment, I'm sorry.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all so much.
Rebels, you put a red blue tag on it. First, this one.
Monday, congratulations on the Rebels.
I have two checks, thank you.
What's your name?
Pratt.
Heather, not related, there's a lot of letters.
Tell me in the blog or something.
Are you friends with Kyle Mars? Did you go to Country Day?
I did, I was June, eighth grade, and then I moved to the North Shore with the same Pauls.
What's your name?
I feel like I'm from the world. And then we were in the twins.
We went to Sweet Cloud.
I know.
We were coming back, we just started to give it to y'all.
We appreciate it, the rest of the year is not going to be so long.
Are you from New Orleans?
Yeah, I grew up in Bucktown, and I went to Mercy. I did a psychical counselor for fire, I'm in Germany for years. I have a new ankle job here, I've been here 24 years, so I'm kind of... But still, my mom still has it. Somebody over like 600,000 for like...
It's crazy.
Ready to count out?
My mom, my dad grew up in...
I'm going to go around the mall first. Go ahead on the...
Give them a friendly outside with a camera and interview, please.
Yes, ma'am, you have anything?
Thank you.
Is there an issue about...
Yes.
Never mind, no, I got anything. And you have anything?
We were talking about that, you want to say something?
Bring it up now.
So that's you, you want to do it?
Sure, and we'll get the board action next.
Yeah. Mr. Bird, I'd like to recognize Doug, he's had some state aid stuff, I think he wants to...
Yes, sir, Marlon asked that I look at the Landen Road in front of the new middle school that just opened, came up with some suggestions, maybe adding a couple of turnways similar to the way we did the Attleville High School several years back. It can be funded through state aid for the construction engineering. As normal, right-of-way acquisition costs will be funded through the county. I don't have a firm number, I can tell you we paid almost 600,000 in construction costs for the one at the Attleville. And I do envision it being very similar to that. If the board likes, I'll prepare a program for you next Monday or the following Monday.
I would suggest that we do that. And as far as land acquisition, we're not talking about that much with Paul and Doug?
No, sir, there's two, there's two parcels to the north because I think the expansion will have to be to the north side due to the stormwater ponds.
Right.
And so you're looking at roughly 1,200 feet of right-of-way acquisition, so.
Yeah, just, I don't know if y'all are aware of it, but it's a traffic problem out there.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I don't know if it'll solve it totally, but at least help mitigate.
It'll help, it'll help, Marlon's correct. But it's the land in new middle school.
West Harrison Middle School.
Yeah, off of Landen Road. The Ford Hooks and the Wolf Road.
So the only cost to the county would be those acquisitions?
Land acquisition.
Yeah, we'll handle it under state aid. We've got some funding, thanks in part to Rebecca getting a grant for the overlay, 500,000 on that.
Some of Rebecca's money.
Which we took it.
It's on one of the lists in my accounts.
So with that grant coming for the overlay, we're going to shift some of that money to this project. And I'll be coming up next week, or yeah, for authorization to advertise on that. We've got great bids on that, so.
So Doug, you can go ahead and proceed with...
I'll get a board order for a program for y'all.
Thank you.
While we're talking about money and roadways, don't forget, now, we've never asked again of the Port Commission one time to offer that they get a billion dollars from the county. And so they didn't need it, and they offered it to us, and they got knocked down to 250 eventually. They said, "Go for it, want it 252."
I just don't think they'll do it now.
I think they will if it's roadways, if you ask them.
And it's millions of dollars.
Well, the justification, Tim, for that was that they were hauling that material down there. I just don't think you'll, I mean, if you go for it, I'm just saying.
I did talk to her.
I know they agreed to do it based on the fact, I think justification was hauling that material and damaging the road.
But let's ask them anyway. Yeah, nothing ventured, nothing gained, right?
Using a lane in a canal road, I was thinking. I put a teapot. All right, Dr. Heavy, what's your name?
Should we ask?
No, I think that's it for me, I can't.
I'll speak to my commissioner or commissioner again.
Yeah, good.
Well, it's civilized, right, or you have anything?
If they do it, I don't know.
How, Ms. Pam, everything?
I just wanted to remind y'all, if we could, on the American Rescue Act, if y'all could come up with some of your projects, have a work session maybe, maybe next week? Or maybe not next week, it'll probably be a long meeting, but maybe at the Biloxi meeting, after the Biloxi meeting?
I'm ready to go, I think...
Or just send us y'all's list?
I talked to John Wilson out at Utility Authority, I want him to get those. We, y'all, we would need those, the transfer of money to them for the project. Okay, he's working on that. And you got Wes Harrison, Morton Sewer District, have you got their proposal?
I got the list, whatever he wanted to do.
I asked him for more detail, maybe some prospective engineering cost. And whatever, and, you know, construction costs would be more...
Or they want us to do, but are they going to do the project, go advertise and do all that? Are they going to want us to do it?
It would, probably, Tim, I guess, they would be the ones to do it. Yeah.
Okay, Sheriff, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
All right, if nothing further, we'd like to get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll have to pay for that motion, say aye. Can't imagine we get any opposed.